All right, we're gonna go ahead and get this meeting started. Suzanne?
Thank you. Mayor Protem Labar.
Present.
Councilmember Alfieri.
Here.
Councilmember Case.
Here.
Councilmember Nikai.
Here.
Councilmember Neil.
Here.
Councilmember Zulwaga.
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. America, we love you.
All right, we have a super cool positive thing happening next on our ceremonies and presentations. So what's happening? They all needed Rob. It distracted me. So for 3A, we have the graduation of the Fall 2021 Citizens Academy class, and we're gonna go ahead and let Grace and Suzanne roll it off for us. I think it's just Grace.
Yeah, absolutely. It's the Grace show.
Can you, can you move your microphone down?
Yes.
Is that good?
Yeah.
Okay. So on October 25th, we wrapped up the Citizens Academy. I was with this group for seven weeks, 21 hours. They're a really awesome group, and it was overall fantastic. So I'm just gonna give you guys a little overview of the seven sessions we did, just super fast, and then we'll move to the graduation. But first of all, I want to thank our sponsors. We had Woodland Fitness, Newmont Mine, Walmart, Caris Bible College, Vector Bank, and Park State Bank. They all provided food for all 25 of these people each session. And then all the lovely green peas that you see are sponsored by Anderson Packet Chip, so. That part without the sponsors, having them provide food is really great because they are with us for three hours on Monday night, so it's just nice to have food for them, too. Next slide. So just like a little bit of history, I know many of you are aware of what the Citizens Academy is, but this is an annual program. It's designed to provide an inside look at city government and basically give a overview of how city government operates, like all the way from what is our, what form of government are we, are we to, to how is our water treated? So it typically happens in the spring. This year it was postponed till fall because we really wanted to have the face-to-face component, and we were uncertain earlier in the year of what that would look like. But it's really important to have the one-on-one experience and also the facility tours. So we decided to postpone it to fall, and we did at least make it happen this year. So this year, we offered seven sessions. Rob, can you move to the next slide? The first one was Local Government 101. So this was kind of basically overview of our form of government, role of city government, what is a city manager, form of government, what is home rule, all of those very basic ideas of what municipal government looks like in Woodland Park. We also got an overview of Woodland Park history, our charter, the role of the city clerk and the city manager. And we did, we did plan a budget, a mock budget activity, but we got to that later, so I'll, I'll give you a little bit of info on that in a bit. Next slide. Um, here's some photos from the Parks and Recreation. So we did get, it was hosted at the U-Pass Cultural Center. Parks and Rec did it up as if there was a wedding there, so it was really beautiful. They learned all about what our Parks and Recreation Department has to offer. They also went on a facility tour of the Aquatic Center, as you can see, and the lifeguards did a rescue demo for this group. So that was really cool to actually be able to see all the guards in action and all the training that goes into what they do. Next slide. And then we got the police department. So we learned all about our police department. We learned about what community policing looks like, teen court, victim assistance, a lot of this stuff this group didn't even know about, so it was really cool that they were able to see that. And as well as all the training requirements required for officers and dispatchers. And then they got a tour of PD, as you can see, and they did get a taser demonstration. Next slide, Rob. With the water utility, they got an overview of the 510 fund, all the budgeting, where our water comes from, and the very elaborate management of water that our Department Utilities Department does. Both, and just in general, how complicated water can be, not only here, but for all of Colorado. And they got a tour of the water treatment plant. Next slide. Waste water, this was a fan favorite. It just was. It was, it was really cool. This is also my first time going to the wastewater treatment plant, so it's, it's really, really cool what they do out there. They got an overview of the 520 fund, wastewater treatment, our compost process, and I think everyone left understanding how important it is to not put grease on the sink. That was a big takeaway there. Next slide. The Planning and Building Department, they got an overview of that. They got a little bit touched on, you know, how our plans, like the comp plan and master plans work together, growth management, how permitting and zoning works in our town. They also participated in group activities, so they got to, they were assigned a parcel of land, and they had to put their developer hats on and develop it per how it's zoned. So it was really interesting to see what they came up with. I think one of them was like a doggy hotel, one of them was a park. It was, it was really, it was really cool. And then also at this class, we did do our budget activity, so they were divided into either council members or residents, and the residents each had a a goal that they wanted to accomplish with the budget, and they had the lobby for that goal. And it was just really interesting because they kind of got to be in your shoes, too, and see how to juggle priorities and budgets. Next. And then Public Works. I think she's on Zoom, so she might be mad at me for this picture. Public Works, we got overview of our facilities crew, streets crew, drainage and stormwater management, and then, of course, a tour of the Public Works facilities. And so I just wanted to give an update for next year. We did have over 60 applications for this Citizens Academy. We only take 25. Just because it is, you know, just, it's more intimate with 25 people, and it's easier to manage for our staff. So we did decide that we're going to offspring, offer spring and fall Citizens Academies. So there will be one in March, and then there will be one in September. More info to come on that. We don't have exact dates for 2022 yet. But we also, this kind of sparked some ideas to offer other learning opportunities that maybe aren't, you know, 21 hours of your life that you have to commit, but offering some other opportunities through our engagement website to learn just basics about how our city works. And so with that, I just wanna, I'm gonna, we're gonna just let everybody come up. I will call your name. Mayor Protime is going to hand you a pin. I'm going to hand you a certificate, and then don't run away because we, you want to get a class picture of you guys. And just round of applause for this group. I just want to say they are amazing. Refreshing to have like just so many very engaged people in a room and asking really good questions. And they were just there every single time and, and very present, so really congratulations to them. So thank you, guys. So I will read, and if we can just hold all applause to the end, if that's possible.
But yelling and screaming isn't permitted?
So Bill Sherwood.
Yay!
Go, Bill. Do you want them to stand up there?
Bill, they want you to stay up here still. They're gonna eventually take a group photo.
Chad Travis. Dean Nelson. Well, we can clap, I don't know. Deanne Betterman.
Yay!
Diane Nelson. Gay Hesley. Not here.
Oh.
Jim Ricks.
Yay! Go, best beard in the crowd.
Jody Romero.
Hey, Joe.
Joe Priest.
Joe.
Julie McLennan.
All right, where's your T-shirt? Did they run out?
Kathleen Wecham.
Hey, Kathleen, yay!
Kathy Sherwood.
Right.
Kim Knight.
The longest to walk.
Linda Mau. Lynn Wooten.
Right.
Melissa, Melissa Bruce.
Right, Melissa.
Nice.
Michael Harper.
Oh.
Patricia Kenforato.
Oh.
Robert Yuski.
Yay, Rob!
Rhonda Knight.
Oh.
Okay. Sandra Gallner.
Yay, Sam.
Sherry LaFune.
Yay, Sherry. All right, all right. A rule breaker, I love them.
Suzette Shelton.
Hey, Suzette, good girl.
Tom Buck.
Tom. Come on down.
You guys are gonna have to form more than one line.
And Zanya wrote about, I know she is not here, but one thing, one more big round of applause for this group, thank you.
Grace, so could some of the people that are not asked for maybe come in? Good friend?
Scooch.
Let's go. There's a lady, there's a lady in the back. I can't see, I can't see you up front. Just wanted to make sure I could see. This will be probably on the key.
Academy.
Ready, one, two, three, cheese!
Congratulations, everyone. Did you have fun? Isn't it great? You learn a lot. Probably.
Congratulations. Well done.
Didn't want me anymore. Thank you.
And Grace, Grace. Somebody from above. Catherine and I were just mentioning, we were listening to the overview that you gave, and this is for all of the graduates. I think your class this time was a better class than what we got, which was the previous one, because I think you had some more hands-on tasks, exercises, that I think you got, you just got a better education than we did through the academy. So great job on what you've done with the academy.
Excellent. Thanks, Grace.
Oh, oh, neat.
That's a great idea.
That's a fabulous.
Really is a great idea.
Yeah. Maybe we could. Maybe we can.
Be ready. Yes, I'm sorry. No, it's the greatest.
All right, moving on to item 3B, we are looking at the consideration of the appointment of Sean Marie Nelson to the Planning Commission. I'm gonna go ahead and let Suzanne present that to us.
Thanks, Mayor Protem. This evening, as council knows, there are currently still some vacancies on the Planning Commission. And there's actually two terms. There's one term that expires on January 1st, 2024, that's available, and a second term that expires on January 1st, 2023. The City Clerk's Office received an application from Sean Marie, and she meets all of the residency criteria to be a member of the Planning Commission. And she, I believe, I, there were so many people here. I don't know if she's here. If you're here, please raise your hand. Sean Marie? Sally, do you see her? Sean Marie, okay. Let's look, she had said she was coming. I do not see her on Zoom.
So I'm gonna suggest if she's not here in person, that we, we move it until she can be.
So Sally's gonna be disappointed, but we both, both of us reached out, and so maybe something came up.
Sure, but I know council really likes to get their opportunity to ask questions of the candidates, so. Sorry, Sally.
Darn.
We have a big case next week.
So maybe if she showed, does show up, and she was delayed for some reason, we could go back to it. Do you think that would be all right?
Yep.
Good. Sally, if she shows up, let us know.
If you want to contact her, Sally.
Just yell, "Hold the meeting!", and we will. Okay, so moving on to item number four, additions, additions, corrections to agenda, we have none. Hop on over to five, consent calendar. We've got 5A, April, October, 21st, 2021 regular council meeting minutes, and the statement of expenditures, and let Suzanne present that to us.
Thank you. As Mayor Protem Labar mentioned, we have the minutes of the October 21st, 2021 regular council meeting, and we also have the August 2021 Statement of Expenditures for Council's Consideration this evening. We can do them both together if they're not individual questions.
Any questions, council?
Um, I didn't see either of those in my packet. It's seven pages, a packet of seven pages, and I didn't see those, so did I miss something?
I can talk to that. He got the same email that I received, which only had seven pages, which is why the exchange we had this morning, where's the whole packet?
So it should be in your board packet that you get when you could.
It wasn't until we fixed the Civic today that I was able to see all 63.
I'd have to defer to Grace why they weren't there.
Yeah, they're 63.
Yeah. Because they're on, I see them online, I see them in the packet. I don't.
In the email.
From the email that you sent.
So she sent him via personal email, and then her photo sent to you guys as well.
Through the Civic clerk.
I think the Civic clerk ones probably.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So for.
We can delay that as well.
Yeah, we're gonna do it next week, next.
We have to figure out the kink, too, with that. Why some of the councils getting it, some.
I always go to your attachment in the email from you, not from Civic clerk.
Yeah, right, and my attachment always has everything, yeah. We're working, like we said earlier, we're working out all the kinks. Would you like to defer that to the next meeting, too, ma'am?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
So for clarification, so what should we expect? Which one should we expect is, or you're gonna just let us know sometime? Okay, okay. Yeah. All right, thanks.
But yeah, the Civic clerk one had it, and the regular email just had seven pages in your maybe attachment. Okay. So. But I looked at the Civic clerk one, now that I think about it. Because when the Civic clerk, they, it emails us and says, "Bing, oh, the agenda's been posted", then I just click on that and say that.
As opposed to the PDF.
Must have been what I did. But I didn't know that either.
Okay.
And, and we discovered that the Civic, some emails went out with this acivic clerk URL that was actually wrong, and that's what we resolved today, and I was able to get into it.
Good, okay, yeah. Well, we'll get it figured out one day.
Yes.
So far, so good. Okay. All right, so we'll, we'll move those to next agenda. So we are at item number six, public comment on items not on the agenda. I'm aware we have one.
Yes, we have, um, let me see. First, we are, the first person signed up is Suzanne Core. Okay, from the farmer's market.
Very good. And she's on, she's here.
She's here in person.
Good evening.
Hi, Suzanne.
Suzanne.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Core. I am on the Board of the Teller County Farmers Market Association, which, as you all know, puts on the Woodland Park Farmers Market each summer, and we just finished our 31st year. Thirty of those years was managed by Judy Crummett, who was the founder. And for those 30 years, everybody was volunteers, both on the board and at the market, and the 31st year, we have volunteers and paid staff, finally. So that's a change. But what I'm here for tonight is to say thank you. You know, it's my personal belief that we don't thank each other enough. And we're partners in so many ways when you live in a community. We've been around a long time. City's been around longer. There's lots of interactions, and the Board just wants to say thank you to the city for being and having been such a partner to the market for a number of years. We appreciate the in-kind donation of the space in Memorial Park. Everybody loves the market and Memorial Park. What's not to love? It is a stunning park. The vendors love it, the shoppers love it, the kids and dogs love it. You know, it's, it's a party every Friday in the summer. We deeply appreciate city staff and all that city staff has done through the years for the city and for the markets specifically. And as I say, we just think that we should say thank you more often. And so we wanted to take this opportunity to do it in person. We do it as a community benefit, and we know that that is why the city partners with us, because it is a community benefit. So this year, I also want to introduce you to our new city manager. The market manager.
Michael Lawson.
So there, there's the joke this evening, Michael.
Yeah, you all know Michael, right? We want to introduce you to our new market manager, Sarah Swart, who we hope will be with us for a long time, although she has, she has sworn it will not be 30 years. And she has a few statistics that she'd like to share with you about the market.
Sarah, could you tell us your last name when you come home?
Sure, it's Swart, S-W-A-R-T. Okay, Swart.
May the Swart be with you.
Not Stewart, kind of like smart. Suzanne, and thank you for, for letting us speak. My husband, Michael, back there, is with me. We just moved to Woodland Park about a year ago after he retired from the airport. So we're getting to know the community and really enjoying being here. Sally tried to recruit me for the commission, but unfortunately, I live outside the city limit, so I couldn't do it. And I was actually kind of wishing I could, but anyway, I'm really enjoying being, working on the farmer's market and kind of getting to know the community, getting to know people that way. And we just wanted to kind of tell you, you know, sort of where we're at. As, you know, has been the case for everybody personally and professionally in businesses, 2020 was a rough year. I think we had to go to a drive-through market and, you know, just saw a lot of decline. So 2021 has been a rebuilding year. I actually took over in July. So I'm really still kind of learning the ropes and figuring out how everything works and getting to know people. But we're enjoying it, and we're, we're really hopeful that we're gonna rebuild stronger next year. We averaged about 45 vendors per market this summer, and we're hoping for 60. So that's kind of the goal next year, to get up to 60 every week. And we did want to share one of the things that we do for our vendors. About 90% of them don't have a city sales tax license, so we collect those sales tax for them, and then, of course, pass it on to you guys. This year, over 17 Fridays, we, the vendors made approximately $271,000.
Wow.
And so that equaled city taxes of just under $11, $11,000 for that 90% of vendors who we cover. And then, of course, the other 10 are paying that on their own. So yeah, just again, we just wanted to kind of let you know, give you a little picture of where things are. I know some of the council members are new, I think, as well, and let you know that we're just very excited about building up for next year. We do have a holiday market happening at the U-Pass Cultural Center on November 20th. So it's a Saturday before Thanksgiving. Hope you'll be there. Thanks again.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mayor Protem, we have Kitty Walker signed up to speak.
Okay. Okay. Hello?
Hello.
Okay, so I understand that I have five minutes. Is that correct?
You do, yes.
Okay, so if someone could give me a verbal four-minute warning, like when I have four minutes, when I have one minute left. When I use the four minutes, my time starts now. Anyway, I'm Kitty Walker, and I am a homeowner in Woodland Park. I bought my home in June, and last year I lived out in Florissant. And so since I moved to Woodland Park, I started coming to the city council meetings to learn about the city and the governing body, which would be you. And I'm actually here to gain knowledge, wisdom, and understanding, because I really don't, you know, know much about how it works. But I have been studying the Charter, which I understand is the city constitution. And so I have been learning some things, and coming to the meeting has been very enlightening. Knowledge is information, understanding is connecting the dots of that information and wisdom. How do I apply that information? And so I would like to speak about the, well, before I speak, I thank you for thanking the council. I want to thank the council. So now I want to speak about the last two meetings. And I don't want you to feel like I'm being critical or condemning, because that is not my heart. I spoke a couple of months ago about unity. I spoke a couple of months ago about unity. And unity does not mean agreement. And that was obvious at the meeting, two meetings ago, that you spoke with intense fellowship. Or we could say passionate conflict, which is fine. It's great, because we get to see and hear, you know, your views and how you want to care for the citizens of the city. You know, you're, you are to support the life, health and, and property of the citizens. And I see that that is what you strive to do. And your voice is heard by your votes as well. And so when you voted to remove the, you know, twelve thousand dollar line item from the budget, you were not all in agreement. But I felt maybe also a lack of unity. And I felt like that was expressed in the last meeting. Am I allowed to address individuals or do I speak generally?
She's allowed to do whatever she would like to do.
So when, when Mr. Neal voted no on the entire budget, because he didn't want the line, twelve thousand dollar line item removed, I felt that that was inappropriate. I felt like it was a personal agenda and not a a vote for the citizens as a whole. And again, I don't want you to feel like I'm condemning or criticizing. I'm just, okay, last, two weeks ago, Deanne spoke and Mayor Pro Tem Labarre said she wished more of the public would speak, so I'm speaking. I just felt like it was not the best vote for the city. And I, I just, I need to say that. It's been bothering me and I just need to say that. I know I have been here for months and I know, Mr. Neal, that your heart is not to do anything that you feel would, you know, not be best for the citizens. So I just want to ask that, you know, intense fellowship. It's great. But, you know, when you're making decisions, keep in mind that your, your, your constitutional duty is to vote on behalf of the citizens of the city. So I am going to end with a prayer. And Father, I just thank you right now in Jesus' name for this opportunity to speak my heart and to let the council know that I do appreciate them. I am here for knowledge, wisdom and understanding. And I am practicing the wisdom of how to apply what I am learning from these meetings. And I just thank you for the opportunity, Lord, that this is a blessed city. This is a blessed council. And this is a blessed citizen, citizenry of this city. So I just praise you in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Kitty.
Thank you.
Perfect timing.
Have a moment just to provide a response.
I know you really want to, but.
If you would like to have coffee, I would love it.
I can put you in touch with, I can put you in touch with Kitty if you'd like to have coffee with her.
I would love to have coffee, Mr. Neal.
That's, that's the tough part of public comments. Yeah, our job is to say thank you and we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you. I will take that into consideration.
And Ms. Walker, we do thank you for coming up and we do appreciate citizens participating. And we are happy to hear whatever you have to say, whether we like it or not. But what we do like is that you do participate, because that helps us immensely, so. All right. Anyone else on the list?
No ma'am.
Okay, we're going to move on to unfinished business. We're at number seven A. And that is the approval of the multimodal transportation option funding, and I believe Sally Riley is our presenter.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. This had been tabled since the last meeting in order for me to meet with C dot and get further clarification about the intergovernmental agreement. And we had a very productive meeting. In fact, I had three C dot members here. And they were encouraging the city of Woodland Park to move forward with the M M O F, which is the multimodal option funding grant for a variety of sidewalk improvements and pedestrian ramps, handicap ramps. So to become in compliance with the American Disabilities Act. And the reason they encouraged us to move forward with this, even though we have, we do have a hard deadline of June first, twenty twenty-three, to complete the project, we actually do not need to complete the project. It can be phased, so that the first phase will be the design or choosing a consultant, designing and then obtaining various clearances that include the surveying completed of these sidewalk areas. And that will take a while, but they said as long as you complete that first phase, then they will reimburse us fifty percent of the cost of that phase. So, and we're not obligated to move into construction. And then Wendy Pettit also said that there may be an opportunity to shift to a different pot of money, so that we could finish it with construction dollars. That might even be a better return of an eighty-twenty split. So they were very encouraged, encouraging to say, move forward, get at least the first phase completed. And I spoke with C dot this morning. And they are also going to make, just a tweak, we had the old city engineer's name in the I G A. So they will fix that and prepare it for the Mayor Pro Tem's signature and the city manager's signature, should you decide to move forward with the opportunity for this grant.
Rusty, did you catch that, that they will clarify the name?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. Council, any questions?
Only one. Talk about this possible shifting of the, of the pots of funding, the eighty-twenty, can you embellish a little on that?
Sure. What happens is when P P A C G, Pike's Peak Regional Council of Governments, funnels much of this money through the Transportation Advisory Committee for review and approval. And then Councilman Zulaga, who sits on the board, the board then appropriates those funds. And they have, they talk about the colors of money. So they come from various pots and have various purposes. And there is something called the TAP funds. And I can't tell you, it's transportation alternatives, I think, funds. And those are for pedestrian and bike and various alternative modes of transportation. And oftentimes, communities who have projects that perhaps don't get fulfilled, those TAP funds become available and we can vie for those as well. So, and it could even be funding from another region that they're unable to use and they shift it over to our region. So there, you never know, but it seems like in the three or four years that I've been serving on TAC, it seems like hundreds of thousands of dollars becomes available just at different times throughout the year.
Well, just being on a P P A C G, I will say that those funds, there's a lot of competition for them. And they're also planned out into the future, so. It's, I'll be interested to see how that happens when funds become available, I guess, because somebody doesn't finish their project. Is that how that would happen? Good.
Council, any further questions or comments? Rusty, I'm looking at you.
I want to say something, but I.
Do you want me to warm it up and then you can jump in? How's that? Because I have a few.
Well, I seem to be the person that everybody wants to take shots at. And, you know, last.
She brought me, go first.
Last week I got a little, and you did it professionally, I will say that, Kelly. And I was wrong. I did not have time to read the whole document, which is why we delayed it. But I kind of want to say, I feel a little vindict or vindicated, because I was the one that found out we would have been in breach of contract had we signed the document as presented last week. It had the wrong P E listed. It was just an oversight.
You can amend those things.
Right, but I took the time to read everything and it, and maybe my slowness in reading everything catches things that, when you, when you're retired, you read every word. I got time to do it. And I find things that, if you're not retired, so. I'm glad I slowed down the thing and you did it so nicely. And I do appreciate that it was professionally done. But the.
It was not intended.
I know. The hand slap was worth it. And I'm glad I took the time. We have a document that will be fixed. Sally, I know, I saw your staff report, so thank you very much. So.
And thank you, Rusty, for that. So no questions? Okay. Uh, yeah, I have a few. Um, do we know, so it sounds like, thank you for getting the questions answered about whether or not we could do this in phases and whether that canceled out the whole contract if we didn't go from beginning to end. So with this phase one that is engineering, do we know what the cost of just that is? Because in here, we have it as just over half a million dollars, but that was for the full project, correct?
Yes. Um, you know, usually design is about fifteen percent of the overall project. But with a C dot project, we'll have to also do quite a bit of surveying. So I would say it's going to be about twenty-five percent of this project, as well as the environmental clearances, the utility clearances and the right-of-way clearances.
So roughly maybe a hundred and fifty thousand?
About two hundred and fifty thousand.
Of half a million, hundred and twenty-five, right?
Sorry, you were giving total number, huh?
I, I'm giving, the total project is over a million dollars. So about twenty-five percent of the million dollars is two hundred and fifty thousand.
And we match fifty percent of it, so out of pocket for us would be roughly one twenty-five.
Correct.
Okay. We're all on the same page then. And this, this came up because it sounds like there's uncertainty about us being able to reach the construction completion date of June first, twenty twenty-three.
Correct.
So what happens, but here's my concern with this. I am hesitant to move forward with this on the thought that we're going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for engineering and surveys, come to the end of this and not be able to do the construction of it. And then when the opportunity presents itself, again, as I've seen many times in this city, we've paid the money to do the study, to have everything in place, but didn't complete the project. And when the time comes to complete that project, we have to go back and do the studies and do the surveys and complete all of that portion again and just wasted all of that money. How long is this going to be good for? Can we be certain that the hundred and fifty dollars we're spending, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars we're spending now is not going to be, you know, obsolete, thank you. That's what I'm looking for. Obsolete in two or three years, if we don't complete the actual construction of it now, for whatever reason, if we can't meet the deadline, if, like you said, the funding dries up, that we're not just throwing money at this and having to turn around and start the process all over again.
Those plans and the work, all the engineering, it can be just held on the shelf and then pulled right off in order to bid and be able to move forward with construction. So it does not become obsolete. It is shovel-ready to be able to move right into construction.
Thank you.
Tell, tell me if I remember correctly. I thought I heard Kip say last meeting that the amount we spend on these projects, or we spent last year, in fact, on sidewalks and whatnot, was, I don't remember the number, but wasn't it, whatever that number was, that this type of investment in this is going to ultimately save the city. If we can go through, if it doesn't end up on the shelf, it's going to save the city a great deal of money. Is that, is that an accurate way of remembering what happened when you were presented on this last week or last meeting?
Well, it saves us fifty percent of the overall cost.
What we've.
To this project.
And we've already spent the full amount of that on prior projects, correct, ourselves?
Well, those were other projects, like the replacement of the sidewalk in front of City Hall and we did.
The school.
Yeah, that was a safe routes to school project. And so the city, I believe, put in maybe about thirty percent of that cost. And the other came from C dot, safe routes to school.
So is that a similar type of program?
It is.
Okay.
Council, anything further? We do have one more. And forgive me, because I think we might have asked this question last time. Where is the funding for this coming from?
It's budgeted in the four-ten fund.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further?
All right, can I get a motion on this topic, please? I will move to approve the M M O U as presented by the staff this evening with the correction of the name of the city engineer that was mentioned by Rusty and Sally.
I'll second it.
Council, you may vote.
It's not coming up for me.
Hit exit and then leave meeting and then it'll pop up and say no.
I know.
If you go.
Verbally, yes.
Okay, the vote is complete. It is passed. With council member voting verbally makes it five to one with Al Fieri voting no.
Now we got. Thank you. Very good. Thank you. Sally, thank you for your time and getting the answers for us. We appreciate it. All right, we're moving on to number eight, ordinances on initial postings, having none. Moving on to item nine, public hearings. We're at nine A to approve an application for hotel restaurant liquor license for Thai Good Eats, and Suzanne is the presenter for that.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce this liquor license to the council for the Thai Good Eats Restaurant, which is located at one oh four dash one oh two East Midland Avenue. For reference, this is where, if you visualize where Joni's is, Judge's is, then that little strip next to it, that's this, this is the space there. The applicants have applied for the application and they have a current sales tax license, an F E I N I E N number. And they've submitted a petition signed by sixty-nine local residents. I have to say that it, that's one of the most, the largest petitions I've gotten for a liquor license so far. So they have sixty-nine local residents and/or business owners that believe this would be a good fit for the area and are excited for this to come. The location is eligible to be licensed. There's proof of possession of the premises that's been received via lease. And the application was submitted to the city clerk's office on September thirtieth. The public notice was published on the website, October twenty-second, and hung in the business's window. And the character of the applicant is not an issue for this hearing. All of their applicable fees have been paid. All of their applicable fees have been paid and Danielle Bowers, I saw her earlier and her husband are here with us in the audience and would be delighted to come up to the podium, tell you what their plan is. And when council is concludes this, I would recommend approval of this hotel restaurant liquor license.
Very good. Do you want to come up?
There she is. Counsel? It's pretty, it's pretty easy. Danielle's lifelong dream has been to own and operate her own restaurant. So yeah, now there are three pool tables next door. She's also bringing the APA back to Woodland Park, which includes Annalee Taylor County leagues, junior leagues that are free. A lot of seniors are interested in the senior league and of course APA. And I also spoke to the gentleman down the road at Stuff and he was originally going to have one table. And now I got him thinking about two, so we could throw our Keller County League back and forth. She makes real Thai food. She is going to Americanize some things because spice levels and things aren't really good for most of us rednecks up here, but. That initially happened with obviously parking. I don't think we're ever going to figure out a parking solution unless we do. When I was in Tokyo, they had lifts. But I'm making a joke, but. No, I mean literally there's no parking, but her food is actually that good where people will probably park as far as they have to to eat. Other than that. Danielle hasn't been able to eat or sleep for like a week now because of all the the young and the restless type episodes have been going through the county or town. And I tried to get her to relax, but that didn't happen. I think she mentally also also made herself sick. She thinks she's sick, but she's not. But other than the things that were said that weren't true by certain people, everything we always have done has been legal and she's excited to start a restaurant.
No reason to be nervous at all. So don't worry. And you guys had a food truck before, didn't you? Yeah.
She actually started under a tent and then moved to a trailer and then another food trailer and then the food truck, which she recently sold.
Very good. Thank you. Thanks for being here and explaining what you guys plan on doing. We look forward to it.
Thank you for having us.
Very good. I'd just like to say that I don't know if you remember, we met last year, you all catered. Yes, you catered our business after hours at Keller Williams. And I know that it was a huge hit and I think you ran out of food and I want to thank you for the meal you sent the next day. It was lovely and your food is delicious. I look forward to your place.
Right. Thank you.
Well, that's, that's all my comment, because I was going to say I'm biased. I love your food. So. Is that going to affect my vote? Yes. So if you all feel that that is a conflict of interest, I'm happy to withdraw, but otherwise. So you've got rid of the, of the portable truck?
Yes, we sold it three weeks ago.
Oh, okay. So it's only sure.
Pork belly sandwiches down in the springs. So I think I'm going down there.
Awesome. Congratulations. Counsel, can I get a motion then?
Yeah.
So moved.
Oh, sure.
Public comment.
Oh, yeah. Very good. Thank you. Suzanne, do we have anyone signed up for comment?
We do not.
Okay. I don't see anyone in the audience.
There's a lot of you here.
And.
Don't make it easy on us.
No. Okay. Very good. All right. Thanks, counsel. Now may I get a motion?
Yeah, so I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the application for the hotel restaurant liquor license for Thai Good Eats as written.
Second.
Counsel, you may vote. No?
Yes.
Thank you, counsel. Motion is passed unanimously.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you all for coming out.
Okay, very good. We're going to move on to new business. We have none. Now we're at reports. Unbelievable.
Wow, all within an hour.
Y'all better not have long reports. You're fired. I have no reports this evening. So Councilmember Ralph Erie. And I have none. I'm going to defer to Councilmember Nakai or Russ Neil, if you'll provide it for me. I was out of town for the charter review.
I have nothing. Thank you.
Okay, I'll try to be fast, but I have two reports. So sorry. So charter review, we basically went through the conflict of interest and clarifications of council filled vacancies and moved that forward. The city attorney is working on language for a new oath of office. He's also working on a draft of misconduct violations of the charter by elected officials. And then we had a discussion that was brought forth by Mr. De Zallem regarding appointments to boards, commissions and committees about having a set of rules on how we should, how we should handle these in the future. Basically requiring an interview in public session. Consensus was this should be addressed either as an ordinance or to the municipal code or maybe to the council's rules of procedure. So we probably should discuss that at some point, not tonight, obviously. And then that was it for the charter. And then for Main Street, DOLA and the Woodland Park Main Street met to discuss their plan for 2022. So the next step was agreed upon between DOLA and the Woodland Park Main Street was as follows. Woodland Park Main Street will remain a designated Main Street community until January 2023. The pause will be effective January 1st of 2022. Their current mini grant and scholarship funds will remain intact, but placed on hold. They will reconvene with the board. DOLA will reconvene with the board in May of 2022. At that time, they will reassess the local support of the program. If requested, DOLA will support Woodland Park Main Street by providing technical assistance and training to help reestablish and rebuild the board, host a Main Street training session with city council and staff, devote resources to develop a new strategic plan and annual work plan during the fall of 2022. DOLA staff will remain available to the Woodland Park Main Street during this transition. Woodland Park Main Street commits to no mini grant or scholarship funds will be spent after December 30th of 2021. Currently, there are no mini grant projects underway. They'll place a pause on applying for the Ackerman Grant for administrative support until the fall of 2022 and the program is reactivated. They'll coordinate the November 2021 shop small Saturday event for the community. They will assist with the lighter side of Christmas committee on the evening of the parade. And they will submit their fourth quarter 2021 report to DOLA and filing of all nonprofit documents by January 15th, 2022, to ensure the program remains in good standing. And that's all I have.
Can I ask you one question on that?
Sure.
I also thought they had an El Pemar grant that they were working on. I didn't hear anything about that.
Uh, I don't know. I can check and I can get back to you. I'm going to clarify and just don't hold me to this, but I believe the anchor, the.
The Ackerman is the.
Is the El Pemar. It's different though, because most El Pemar is projects and that is a separate set of it that is strictly for administrative costs. That's very rare. But I think they're one in the same. Again, don't hold me to that, but my memory recalls that they're one in the same and that's within the El Pemar from foundation, just a different portion of it.
Okay. So then would you review what you said about the Ackerman Grant then?
So it says they're, they're going to pause on applying for the Ackerman Grant for the administrative support until the fall of next year.
Okay, great. All right. So then is that meaning we're pulling that out of the budget?
That's something we can talk about as part of the budgets. I had a conversation with Main Street members, a few of them yesterday. So we, maybe not for reports, but.
Okay.
I, I do have three. Okay, historical preservation committee, November 1st. We had a quorum this time. They did approve the HPC's work plan for 2022 and the HPC's budget request for 2022. So what they've submitted to the city is now actually not formal in their request. Second thing is they have been making some progress over the couple, couple of years. They did approve a contract to award well, it's a $2,700 contract to build and install the mounting frames and informative panels that they had designed last year. And this would be for the cog railway and the, and the wooden station. So that is moving forward. They did put in a request to me to bring to council, which I will at the budget, but I, I was asked to bring it to two places. And it has to do with the asbestos abatement from the, the actual train station. It's a $12,000 project. They did, they do have the grant of $5,000 coming from the Newmont Mine. I did take it to the DDA, so it's a part of my DDA report. Also a request to provide some form of the remaining budget need and which is $7,000. The DDA did vote and approve 3.5, so the half of what remained for the asbestos abatement. So when we get into our budget workshop, as a liaison, I was asked to bring that to council, so I will be doing that.
So 3,500.
The 3,500 remainder. The Downtown Development Authority, November 2nd, the, the board voted to enter into a 90-day exclusive negotiations agreement with Mike Williams. The deliverables included financial proof of, of the investment, investors and preliminary design that includes buildings, their uses, densities, things like that, and the remaining real estate uses that was in the deliverable. The DDA board did vote to terminate the legal relationship with Paul Benedetti and they do intend to conduct a search for a new legal firm or council. They did finalize the salary for the new administrative assistants. They approved the payment of the invoice to Apex, who actually had done the graphics work for the interpretive panels and had not been paid. So he will be being paid. And as I previously mentioned, the 3.5 was approved by the DDA in their budget request. And I did, do want to point out, I did recuse myself from that vote so that I preserve my vote here at city council on their budget. Last council, the Colorado Municipal League. Thank you, Sally. Big. What she's doing behind the scenes is amazing. She finalized a letter of intent that was submitted to DOLA. It, for a request of $279,773. This is an 80% of the total request for the project for habitat, for humanity, to continue their attainable housing initiative. The trailhead did qualify for those buildings that had not been started. So that money will go to there, which they already had the money to do it. So what that, the dominoing effect is it frees up that amount of money then to start looking at other properties in which they can start a, a second housing project. So the, the city staff, the city council is, is hearing the, the comments from the comprehensive plan. And we've all talked about it, the need for attainable housing, the citizens keep bringing it up. There are things going on behind the scenes to get more housing in Woodland Park. Government is slow, but with people like Sally and the council's support, we're making progress and that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Very good. I have a quick question. The cost for the asbestos that DDA is covering, is that 21 or 22 this full year?
22.
Okay. And what line item did that expense come from? Since there's no longer beautification for Woodland Station Line?
That, Michael, you were going to go in and make the recommendation, which line that would come out of? That was the discussion. That's where we had terminated it.
What was the item that we were going to use 21 savings for?
Well, the $30,000 from the, the Woodland Station, the 2021, that came up in the discussion, but we did not go in and specifically. So I don't know if they're going to go back and I, I did not participate in the budget of the, of the DDA. I sat there. I did not participate. So I don't think it has been completely thought through as to which line it will be inserted into. I believe my expectation is, Michael, you were going to make a recommendation back to them.
Right. I, it would, if we don't have a professional services or construction services line account in the DDA, we would create one.
There is a professional services.
There is a professional services.
Under 5,000.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's.
Just a braiding line.
I would appreciate a confirmation on that, since previously this council had removed their Woodland Station Improvements line item to, to be able to oversee that with a very clear, micromanaged eye. So I'd like to know where that's coming from.
So, so we can, I, I believe we have an account for construction services. Aaron will have a better idea, but I don't believe there are any construction services lines currently in the DDA budget. But we can, we can create that account in the DDA budget. You will be able to see that 3,500 pretty easily. And council member Casey is right in that, whereas the Woodland Station Improvements was a capital project that over $5,000. This been below that, it can, it would just be an operating. So it would be a different kind of account to get.
So does that not defeat the purpose of why that Woodland Station Improvements line item was removed so that council could closely oversee the money that's put in at Woodland Station? If we're just creating a line item for them to spend as they please?
It's not a capital expenditure.
I will take back that we need, yeah. Like I said, I did not participate in any of the discussions. I, I had to keep my mouth shut and I did not vote on any line item at all. The discussion was Mike was going to, so it was a little bit loosey goosey. I, I'm hearing you. I will take it back and say we need to nail it down in exactly where the money is going to be budgeted. And that then concludes my liaison. No, that's my job. That's my job. That's all I have.
I have one question as well. Where is the demarcation between DDA property and Bergstrom Park? And isn't Bergstrom Park part of the city? As opposed to the DDA purview?
Correct. The interpret, the interpretive signs will be placed on city property, not DDA property.
But the expenditure of money on a city project from the DDA, that's what I'm confused about. If you're, if the.
It's Bergstrom Park is. It's the DDA district though.
Okay.
Yeah, I was wondering about that too, but it'd be within the whole district. So they are technically, they can spend it there.
All right, great. Thanks for clarifying that. PPACG is my only report. Firstly, we have a budget item coming up, apportioning $50,000 for the reliever route study. So I think I've already said it before on council, but the funds have already been allocated from C dot for 2023 for that study. And we and our region need to come up with a portion of that and it's somewhere around $100,000 to, to pitch in for that study. So my hope and intention is for all of us that if there is a buy-in from us that we network with local Teller County, Cripple Creek, Victor, the mines, the, the casinos and get some buy-in from them to say, hey, you know, is this going to benefit you? It's not just really a Woodland Park issue. It's not just really a Woodland Park issue. It really is a regional issue. So for each of us to kind of be mindful if we have an opportunity to interact with some of these other agencies to get a get a pulse from them about if they're willing to to chip in something towards that. So that's that part, and I see it's coming up in our budget this for twenty twenty-two. The other item is, I also reported on it, and it's still ongoing, this whole greenhouse gases rules committee coming from our illustrious governor. It's really causing a lot of discussion, so they pushed it back further. So there's more room for public comment. If anybody is seriously concerned about the fact that we're gonna have fifty percent of the vehicles in Colorado by twenty thirty being electric. If you want to write in and let them know that you think that's a fabulous idea or not such a fabulous idea, please do so. And that concludes my report.
Very good.
The only thing that I would add is that talking about cars and fiscal responsibility reminds me of something. And that's how my uncle always used to say that you can fix anything with duct tape and WD forty. What I didn't get is why it took him seven years to lose his medical license.
He snuck in a dad joke.
And you're welcome. And I'm sorry. And the other, the other thing is I just want to give one more quick thank you to Grace for pouring her heart and soul and doing a great job for the Citizens Academy. As you said, it was a big improvement. She she really shined and spent a lot of hours making that happen. So thank you, Grace. That's all I got. Eight fifteen.
Going over.
Suzanne, let's be a reporter.
Well, let me end it. Okay, so this meeting is adjourned. We are reconvening, though, for the budget work session so that we can conclude Councilmember Zuluwaga's budget question.
The last go-round.
Yes.
We have more, but.
You're welcome to stay if you want. You're welcome to leave if you'd like. Thanks, everyone.